First meeting of the, of the year. For new council members, just to let you know, this is here for, we have to record by either voice and video, or voice has to at least capture voice by state law. So, we are doing that, so we're actually doing a voice recording and a video and voice. So, if you wanted to watch this later, you can. Just let you know that. Would you please stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for bringing us here today. Thank you for all that you do for us, for your love and grace for us. Lord, we ask that you keep our hearts and our minds on, on Leslie and the folks of Leslie as we conduct our business here tonight. Please keep all of our families safe as we return home to them this evening. Thank you, Lord, for all you do, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who have not met him yet, this is Alan Rippey, our new recorder treasurer. He has size forty-four shoes to wear. Mr. Davis was here for forty-four years, so Alan, without further ado, will you take our attendance and roll call?
Gary.
Here.
Uh, Hayden.
Here.
Uh, Richard.
Here.
Laura.
Yeah.
Jackie.
Here.
And Missy.
Here.
Next agenda item is approving the minutes. Y'all have received your packets, I presume, with your minutes in it? Um, I'll need a motion to approve your minutes, the minutes from, we have two meetings. November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Those were put in right? And December nineteenth.
We need to make a motion for each individual one?
Yeah. November twenty-fifth.
I motioned to approve November twenty-fifth minutes.
By the second.
By the second.
All those in favor? And the meeting on our special meeting that we had, um, December nineteenth. This was to award a contract for the Leslie waters, the, uh, water system improvement phase two.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion made to approve the minutes from December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, two seconds, one Richard and one. Bert, do you prefer Bert or Gary?
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
What do you prefer?
Bert, gotta work.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any old business from previous meetings? Four of y'all might not know, but you might if you were sitting here. With that, we're gonna move on to business, business items for this meeting. All of you have been sworn in. Four of you were sworn in at the court, five of you were sworn in at the courthouse, little later than midnight. And then, two of you I took care of, one on Friday and one on Saturday. Right? So, congratulations and, and thank you for stepping up for your community. Um, item number two, so we don't need to swear in, I've already, it's all taken care of. Item number two on the agenda was Mr. Passmore, and he has opted not to come in tonight. He had a, he stopped by this morning and had a conversation, so, to be determined. And moving on, we're gonna go ahead and go through the, uh, council rules, um, for the year. Arkansas law says we have to adopt council rules, um, for our first meeting of the year. This is something that has worked. These are the ones that have worked for the last two years. I have added a couple items. This isn't the end-all, be-all, if y'all want to add or take away, we can have discussions about it and talk about it. So, this is a, a framework for you all to, uh, come to a conclusion. I feel like it's a good working copy, I feel like, um, but with that being said, we'll go through and have a discussion, okay? Meeting rules for the City Council of Leslie, Arkansas, if anybody is like a really good reader and they prefer to read, there's gonna be a lot of reading tonight.
Tag D.
Yeah, alright, so I'll just go ahead and read this. Whereas the City Council is charged with setting the rules for its proceedings, and the City Council finds the following rules should, rules should be followed to promote efficient, consistent, and fair city council meetings. Item one, City Council, council members shall reside within the corporate limits of their respective wards at the time they file as candidates for council members and while holding that office. Regular meetings, all regular meetings of the City Council shall be held in City Hall on the first Monday of each month at seven P.M. Should a holiday or conflicting event occur on any such Monday, the regular meeting shall be held on the day designated by the City Council at the same time and place determined by the City Council. Item three, special meetings, the mayor shall have the power to call special meeting of the City Council. The mayor shall notify the city clerk and each council member of the date, time, and place and subject of the meeting. Further, three council members may call a special meeting by signing and submitting a notice to the mayor and other members of the ca- city council. The notice shall state date, time, place, and subject of the meeting. Said notice shall be followed with the city clerk, who shall notify the mayor and city council members of the date, time, and place and subject of the meeting. The city clerk's notification to county, council members of a special meeting shall be made by personal service, by telephone, or by email. Only the council member who requested the special meeting, or the mayor, if she, he or she requests the special meeting, may cancel the special meeting. At any special meeting, no other business shall be transacted beyond that for which the meeting was called. All such meetings shall be open to the public and press and media that have requested notice must be given at least two hours advance notice. Item four, executive sessions, executives' sessions shall only be convened by the City Council when one is permitted according to state law, and specifically, the State Freedom of Information Act, which shall be strictly observed at all times. Item five, duty of council members to attend, it shall be the duty of each council member to attend all meetings. Item six, presiding officer, as set forth in state law, the mayor shall preside at a meeting of the City Council and shall have a vote as provided in state law. In the absence of the mayor, the City Council shall appoint one of its members to serve as a presiding officer of a city council meeting rotating by wards. Item seven, meeting journal, the city clerk shall, in accordance with state law, keep a journal of all the proceedings of all regular and special meetings of the City Council, which shall be open for inspection and examination as set forth in state law. Additionally, may be posted on the city's website. Order of business, regular sessions of the City Council shall proceed under the following pattern, which shall be reduced to writing in the form of an agenda distributed to all council members prior to the meeting. One, call to order, two, prayer, pledge of allegiance, attendance, roll call, approval of city council meetings, council meeting minutes. Old business, new business. Subleg, presentation of ordinances, resolutions, um, public comments, and any other business brought by council or mayor and a German. Rules of procedure, the council meeting shall be conducted with the relaxed application of Robert's Rules of Order. Item ten, participation in discussions. Participation in discussion of any question before the City Council shall be limited to members of the council and the mayor. Agenda, the City Council meeting agenda shall be prepared by the city clerk and may be mailed, picked up, or delivered such that is received in hand by council members before the meeting agenda, and documents may also be delivered via email. Item twelve, electronic devices, council members should not utilize electronic devices or other forms of private communications during a meeting to communicate amongst themselves, the public, or anyone else during a city council meeting to include texting, except for an emergency. Item thirteen, all city council meetings will be recorded either by voice only or by video to enable voice recording or both. Video recordings will be posted on the city's website. Item fourteen, public comments. Procedure, there shall be a period of public comment as prescribed in the order of business. The mayor will be responsible for noting concerns and questions and responding to the citizen as appropriate. The person desiring to speak during this comment period shall limit their comments to three minutes as determined by the mayor. At the mayor and city council's discretion, persons desiring to address a particular i- agenda item shall do so immediately before that item is considered by the council, as indicated by the mayor. Each person addressing an agenda item shall limit their comments to three minutes and may speak one time only to an individual, to an individual item which shall be monitored by the mayor. Any person wishing to address the council in the comment period or pertaining to a particular item shall indicate their desire by signing the public, public comment sheet in City Hall prior to the start of the meeting. The mayor shall administer the public comment period and comments pertaining to agenda items and shall be responsible for monitoring the time taken by each speaker and will instruct the speaker as to their time, when their time is exhausted. Any council member may move for additional time to be allowed, which will require a two-thirds vote of council. Council members may at their discretion ask attendees for input on a particular item. Rules of decorum for the audience, meeting attendees or the audience will refrain from commenting, clapping, shouting, booing, or other inappropriate and or disrupt, disruptive behavior. Will refrain from private conversations during meetings and should not address council members in individual conversation or make comments to individual council members. Any pause for concern or discussion or any adds or takeaways, or, um, this is... Y'all have had these, I think, for a few days, and I'm sure you probably looked over them, and I'm... Hopefully you took notes and that's, but if there's any adds or takeaways? Do we feel that is sufficient, or?
I do, yeah.
I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it too stringent, is it too, or is it? Just wanting to have a dialogue about it, but?
No, I think it's fine, I just don't wanna hear any digging from phones behind me.
Okay.
I find that really disrespectful.
Okay. So, do we, do we need to add in there? These are our rules, by the way, that when you come in, please turn your phones on silent, or?
Yeah, why not? I mean, as I was in the audience, I, oh, shouldn't be, I just don't like hearing.
Like I said, these are our rules. Um, and we can just ask that folks turn on, in, in the, in the, I mean, we aren't supposed to have our phones here. But as an audience member, please turn your phones on silent or vibrate or whatever. I think that would be... So, I can add that in there, okay? Any other additions or changes, or?
Would you prefer this was on or off?
I'd prefer that, um...
Just volume low?
Volume low, and you're a first responder, and that's a life, life limer, I, I mean, that's...
Please don't turn that off.
That, that takes precedence, so. I mean, I know you're not gonna get on there and talk to your buddies about this.
Really?
You might. Anyways, um, so...
Is there any, um, and this is just coming from being, a question coming from being on different boards and, uh, is there, when it, when it talks about, uh, the responsibility of the council member to be present at meetings? Is there any verbiage or anything need to be put in there as to like, the number that you can miss, or, you know, um, that's allowable, or? Other than like emergencies or whatever?
Right, so, w- we have never done that. I'm not saying that it's not doable, I have seen rules and regulate, rules for city councils to where if you miss more than two a year, you're going to get penalized, and you're not gonna get paid for those meetings. Um, I've seen that. Here, um, the way it's always been is if a council member misses, they still get a paycheck. I mean, these are your rules, so...
And it, and it may not be an issue at all, you know, it's just, and we could always change this at a later date if we needed to, I was just throwing it out there, 'cause...
And it's also a strike of a pen to say, you know what, if it's a, if we can write more than two, or, you know, two are excused, how, uh? These are our rules, and, you know, when I'm... I'm gonna finish writing while y'all talk about that for a second, but, um...
It can be something we could add later if it, if it becomes an issue, I guess. I don't know, being on, you know, a new guy, whether that's even an issue or a, or a problem.
We can revisit these rules anytime, we could put it on an agenda item, and we can revisit it, and if we feel like it's been an issue with Hayden missing six months, which I will never foresee, you know, if Hayden's like, you know what, I'm not, you know? Then we can have that conversation, yeah, I agree with that. Okay? Um, so what I wrote, um, at the bottom of my sheet, this will get typed and we'll put it in the, the, um, but as audience members, please turn off cell phones during meetings, okay? I think that's, uh, or put on silent. Okay? So, we will need a motion, um, to approve these minutes if there's no more discussion.
Approve the rules.
The rules.
Uh, the rules, I'm sorry.
I motioned to approve the rules as, as read.
Got a motion to approve, got a motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, um, ooh, I got this out of order, sorry. Uh, let's see. Nope. It's the ESI. Got a little technical glitch, bear with me.
Is this the one?
Yeah. Okay. So, next item on the agenda is an agreement for engineering services with ESI, which you've heard Chelsea speak to earlier, which is engineering services. They're out of, um, Fayetteville Springdale area. The city has a long relationship with them, um, going a long ways back. I prefer, I like working with them, they are very easy to work with. They are currently the, the plan drawers for this grant that we've got going. Anyways, but we have to enter an agreement with them for their services. Part of the grant amount is, um, um, for engineering and part of it's for, um, inspection of the, of the, the work that's being done. So, they, they capture both of that, the engineering, the plans, and the, um, inspection while the guys are here working, so, we're gonna discuss that now. This agreement made this, this, uh, sixth day of January twenty twenty-five by and between the city of Leslie, hereafter referred to as the owner, and ESI, herein, herein after referred to as the engineer. The owner intends to construct a Leslie Water System Improvement Phase Two in Cersei County, state of Arkansas, which may be paid for in part with financial assistance from the state of Arkansas. Acting through and, through the natural, Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, herein after referred to as ANRC, and for which the engineer agrees to perform the various professional engineering services for the design and construction of said sys- system. Witnesseth that for, and in consideration of the mutual covenants and promises between the parties heretofore, is hereby agreed. Section eight, engineering services, the engineer shall furnish engineering services as follows. The engineer will conduct preliminary investigations, prepare preliminary drawings, provide a preliminary, preliminary itemized list of probable construction costs effective as of the date of preliminary report, and submit a preliminary engineering report. The engineer will provide the owner the required number of copies of the preliminary engineering report and layout maps to meet funding source, sources needs. The engineer will cooperate with, and work closely with state agency representatives. The engineer will attend conferences with the owner or other interested parties as may be reasonably necess- necessary. After the preliminary engineering report has been reviewed and approved by the owner, and the owner directs the engineer to proceed, the engineer will perform the necessary design surveys, accomplish the detailed design of the project, prepare construction drawings, specifications, and contract documents, and prepare a final cost estimate based on the final design for the entire system. The final cost estimate will be submitted with the final set of plans and specifications submitted for ANRC approval. It is also understand, understood that if subsurface explorations such as boring, soil tests, rock, soundings, and the like are required, the engineer will furnish coordination of said explorations without additional charge, but the cost incident to such explorations shall be paid for by the owner as set out in section D hereof. Also, the engineer will coordinate environmental permitting, biological surveys, services required during the design phase. Cost incident to such services shall be paid for by the owner as set out in section D hereof. The contract documents furnished by the engineer under section A five above shall include contact, contract documents, general conditions, and supplemental general conditions supplied by ANRC. All of these documents shall be subject to approval by the owner and ANRC. All other documents shall be subject to approval by the owner and the ANRC. The engineer will assist the owner in obtaining permits needed for construction, including, including but not limited to highway and county road, railroad, ADEQ construction permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWPPP. The SWPPP will be specific for the construction of the project in accordance with ADEQ standards. Prior to that, prior to the advertisement forbids, the engineer will provide for each construction contract not to exceed seven copies of detailed drawings, specifications, and contract documents for use by the owner and said inappropriate state and local agencies from whom approval of the project must be obtained. The cost of such drawings, specifications, and contract documents shall be included in the basic compensation paid to the engineer. The engineer will furnish additional copies of the drawings, specifications, and contract documents as required by prospective bidders, material suppliers, and other interested parties, but may charge them for reasonable cost of such copies. Upon award of each contract, the engineer will furnish to the owner five sets of drawings, specifications, and contract documents for execution. The cost of these sets shall be included in the basic compensation paid to the engineer. Original documents, survey notes, tracings, and the like, except those furnished to the engineer by the owner are, are and shall remain the property of the engineer. The drawings prepared by the engineer under provisions of section A five above shall be at a scale approved by the owner, the ANRC, and in accordance with the minimal design standards attached, the engineer shall prepare and furnish to the owner, without any additional compensation, three copies of maps showing the general location of needed construction easements, permanent easements, and lands to be acquired, property surveys, property plaits, property descriptions, abstracting, and negotiations for land rights shall be accomplished by the owner unless the owner requests and that the engineer agrees to provide those services. In the event the engineer is requested to provide such services, the engineer shall be additionally compensated as set out in section D hereof. The engineer will attend the bid opening, tabulate bid proposals, make an analysis of the bids, and make recommendations for awarding contracts for construction. Certified bid tabulations with the engineer's seal and supporting documents will be prepared and submitted to the ANRC for approval before authorization of contract award. Furthermore, the engineer will submit for ANRC concurrence undersign, unsigned contract documents for review and approval to enact. The engineer and owner shall attend pre-construction brief conference scheduled by the ANRC. At the time of pre-construction conference, notices to proceed will be issued. The engineer will review and approve for con- conformance with the design concept, any necessary shop and working drawings furnished by contractors. The engineer will interpret the intent of the drawings and specifications to protect the owner against defects and deficiencies in construction on the part of the contractors. The engineer will not, however, guarantee the performance by any contractor. The engineer will establish baselines for locating the work, together with suitable number of benchmarks adjacent to the work as shown in the contract documents. The engineer will review the contractor's applications for progress and final payment, and when approved, submit same to the owner for payment. The engineer will provide general engineering review of the work of the contractors of the, construction progresses to ascertain that the contractor is conforming to the design concept. The engineer shall provide a suitable staff to perform field services, surveys, engineering surveillance, and inspection during construction of the project, and to provide the required services during the year immediately following initiation of operation of the completed facility. Unless notified by the owner in writing and approved by ANRC, that the owner will provide for resident inspection, the engineer will provide resident construction inspection. The engineer will provide a sufficient number of inspectors to ensure that adequate inspection is maintained. The engineers undertaking hereunder shall not relieve the contractor of a contractor's obligation to perform the work in conformity with the drawings and specifications in a worklike, workmanlike manner, shall not make the engineer an insurer of the contractor's performance, and shall not impose upon the engineer any obligation to see that the work is performed in a safe manner. If the engineer provides for resident inspection, the owner and the engineer agree that each inspector is the engineer's agent while said inspector is on the construction site, until the engineer notifies the contractors in writing that the engineer is terminating the services of said inspector of the project. If the owner notifies the engineer in writing that the owner will provide for resident inspection, the owner and the engineer agree that each inspector provided is the owner's agent while said inspector is on the construction site, until the owner notifies the contractor in writing that the owner is terminating services of said inspector on the project. Item nineteen, the engineer will prepare, prepare necessary contract change orders, including reconciliation change orders for approval of the owner and others on a timely basis. The engineer will notify NRC, the owner, the contractor, and surety of construction progress as noted below. When eighty percent of the contract time has elapsed, the engineer shall provide... the engineer shall provide a written notice, shall provide written notice within five working days to the contractor, the surety, the owner and ANRC of the contract time remaining and the work remaining to be performed. If the engineer deems the project to be on time for completion, then they may contact the owner and the ANRC via email requesting a relief from this clause. If the work is not substantially completed within the contract time, the engineer shall provide written notice within five working days to the contractor, the surety, the owner and ANRC of the applicability of liquidated damages and shall identify the work required to be completed to achieve substantial completion. Further, the engineer shall provide written notice to these same parties of the date on which he deems the work to be substantially complete. The engineer will attend in company with the owner and ANRC a final inspection of the project as scheduled by all parties. This inspection will be for conformance with the design concept of the project and compliance with the contract documents. The engineer will make a final review and submit a written, written report to the owner and the ANRC prior to the issuance of the statement of substantial completion of all construction. The engineer shall submit a statement of completion to and obtain the written acceptance of the facility from the owner and the ANRC prior to submitting the final payment estimate to the owner. The engineer will notify the owner in writing that the project is complete, acceptable and ready for final payment. The engineer will provide the owner with one set of reproducible record as-built drawings and one set of prints at no additional charge. ANRC will receive a set of as-built drawings in digital format acceptable to ANRC. Such drawings will be based upon construction record provided by the contractor during construction and reviewed by the resident inspector and compared with the resident inspector's construction diary. The engineer will be available to furnish engineering services and consultations necessary to correct unforeseen project operational difficulties for a period of one year after the date of statement of substantial completion of the facility. This service will include instruction of the owner in initial project operation and maintenance, but will not include supervision of normal operation of the system. Such consolation, consultation and advice shall be furnished without additional charge except for travel and subsistence costs. The engineer will assist the owner in performing a review of the project, no less than ten months, but no more than eleven months after the date of statement of substantial completion of the facility. The engineer further agrees to obtain and maintain the engineers, at the engineer's expense, such insurance as will protect the engineer from claims under the Workers' Compensation Act and such comprehensive general liability insurance as will protect the owner and engineer from all claims for bodily injury, death and property damage which may arise from the performance by the engineer or by the engineer's agents of the engineer's functions and services required under, under this agreement. If the owner notifies the engineer that the owner will provide for resident inspection, the owner agrees to obtain and maintain at the owner's expense such insurance as will protect the owner from claims under the Workers' Compensation Act and such comprehensive general liability insurance as will protect the owner and engineer from all claims for bodily injury, death and property damage which may arise from the performance of any resident inspectors provided by the owner of the owner's functions and services required under this agreement. If the above is not accomplished within the time period specified, this agreement may be terminated by the owner. The owner will extend the time for completion for a reasonable time if the completion is delayed due to unforeseeable causes beyond the control and without the fault or negligence of the engineer. Section B. You want to read? Give me this quick section.
Compensation for engineering services. The owner shall compensate the engineer for applications, reports, preliminary engineering services, design and contract administration services excluding, excluding resident inspection in the amount of either A, two hundred thirty thousand, two hundred sixty-eight dollars and zero cents. The compensation for application reports, preliminary engineering services, design and contract administration services excluding resident inspection shall be payable as follows. A, a sum which equals no more than twenty percent of the total compensation payable under section B one after completion and submission of the construction drawing, specification, cost estimates and contract documents and the acceptance of the same by the owner and the ANRC, provided that said sum is not paid from the ANRC funding programs. B, the sum which together with the compensation provided in B two A above equals eighty percent of the total compensation payable after the construction contracts are awarded. C, a sum equal to fifteen percent of the compensation shall be paid on a monthly basis for in, for general engineering review of the contractor's work during the construction period and percentage ratios identical to those approved by the engineer as a basis upon which to make partial payments to the contractor. However, payments under this paragraph and or such additional sums as are due the engineer by reason of any necessary adjustments in the payment computations will be in the amount so that the aggregate of the all sums paid to the engineer will equal ninety-five percent of the compensation. D, a final payment equal to one hundred percent should be made when it is determined that all services required by this agreement have been completed except for the services set forth in section A dash twenty-three hereof. Section C, duties, responsibilities and compensation of resident inspectors. When engineer provides resident inspection, the engineer will, prior to the pre-construction conference, submit a resume of the resident inspector's qualifications for approval by the owner and the ANRC. The owner shall compensate the engineer for resident inspection services in the amount of either A, one hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. The owner shall compensate the engineer upon receipt of an itemized bill once each month for such services performed hereunder during the previous thirty days. The same to be due and payable by the owner to the engineer on or before the tenth day following receipt of said bill under normal, normal construction circumstances and for the proposed construction period of three hundred sixty-five days.
The resident inspector shall provide full-time resident inspection of the construction to observe the progress and quality of the work executed by the contractors to determine if such work is in accordance with the contract documents. Endeavor to guard the owner against defects and deficiencies in such work. Maintain a daily diary in which the following, at a minimum, shall be recorded. The daily diary may be maintained in a digital format, provided the engineer is comfortable in doing so from a legal standpoint. Also, the diary shall be open for inspection by the owner and the ANRC at all times. Work performed, number of workers and equipment, with detailed description of equipment used, defects and deficiencies in such work, if not corrected by the contractor, weather conditions. Submit a copy of the daily logs for each week to the owner, no later than Monday of the following week. Also, the engineer or inspector will provide the ANRC a summary of the daily logs every four weeks. The summary may be submitted to, to ANRC via email. Verify that the contractor is using construction methods and materials in accordance with the specifications within the easements provided. In compliance with specifications, especially depth of cover and acceptable bedding and backfill materials before initial backfilling is performed. Advise the contractor when the work performed is not meeting conditions set forth in section C two E above. Section D, additional engineering services. In addition to the foregoing being performed, the following services may be provided upon prior written authorization of the owner and the ANRC. Site surveys for properties, treatment plants, dams, reservoirs, solid waste landfills and other sim- similar special surveys as may be required. Laboratory tests, asphalt testing, well testing, well test, boring, specialized geological soils, hydraulic or other studies recommended by the engineer. Property surveys, detailed description of sites, maps, drawings or estimates, estimates related thereto assistance in negotiating for land and easement rights, necessary data and filing maps for water rights, water adjudication, adjudication and litigation necessary for MPDES permit application, additional design and redesigns requested by the owner after final plans have been accepted by the owner and approved by Arkansas Department of Health. Additional construction observation services for additional work not included in the original contract. Appearances before courts or boards on matters of litigation or hearings related to the project. Preparation of environment impact assessments and/or environmental impact statements, performance of detailed staking necessary for construction of the project in excess of control staking, set forth in section eight fifteen. Payment for the services specified in section D shall be agreed in writing between the owner and engineer and approved by NRC prior to commencement of the work. Bearing unforeseen circumstances, such payment is estimated not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. The engineer will render the owner for such services an itemized bill separate from any other bill, billing, once each month for compensation for services performed hereunder during the previous thirty days. The same to be due and payable by the owner to the engineer on or before the tenth day following receipt of said bill. Section E, other costs. The owner shall pay for other review fees charged by agencies such as Arkansas Department of Health, R dot permits, ADQ permits, et cetera. The owner shall pay all costs for public notices, advertisements, forbids, et cetera. Section F, in witness whereof the parties heretof have executed or caused to be executed by their duly authorized officials, this agreement is duplicate on the respective dates indicated below. There's where my signature is, but there's more papers. One, one more ish. Alright. The following standards are adopted as minimal design criteria. Recommended standards for waterworks and recommended standards for wastewater facilities published by the Great Lakes Upper Mississippi River Board of State Sanitary Engineers, commonly referred to as the ten state standards, shall be used. ANRC and the Arkansas Department of Health must approve deviations. The detailed drawings shall clearly indicate the location and width of waterline easements. Drawing shall also include the distance from the roadway center line to the easement. Detailed drawing shall should have a minimum scale of one inch equals a hundred feet. Deviations from the minimal scale shall stated above may be granted. However, any deviation resulting in scale smaller than one inch equals a hundred feet will require preparation of separate easement maps and staking of the water lines in the field. The engineer will be responsible for ensuring that the water lines are constructed on the easements. Also, ANRC and the Arkansas Department of Health must approve any easements. As-built drawings shall include water main valve tie-down distances. The following specifications and definitions shall be included in the technical specifications. Depth cover, minimum of thirty inches over top of pipe. Local conditions may require deeper cover. Bedding material, bedding materials shall be defined in the ten state standards. At a minimum, bedding materials shall be selected and placed carefully avoiding stones over one and a half inches in size, frozen lumps and debris, sharp stones and crushed rock larger than three quarters of an inch, which could cause significant scratching or abrasion of the pipe, shall be excluded from the bedding material in accordance with AWWA manual M twenty-three, section seven one. Backfill material, initial backfill, six inches above the top of the pipe and material around sides of the pipe shall be selected and placed carefully, avoiding stones over inch and a half and inches in size, frozen lumps and debris, sharp stones and crushed rock larger than three quarters of an inch, which could cause significant scratching or abrasion of the pipe, shall be excluded from the initial backfill in accordance with AWWA manual M twenty-three, section seven dash one. Remaining backfill shall contain no large stones or rocks, frozen material or debris in accordance with AWWA manual twenty-three, section seven one. Rock excavation, in the event rock requiring blasting or other removal techniques beyond conventional backfiller trencher usage is encountered, trench depth shall be excavated six inches below pipe grade before laying pipe. The trench shall be filled back to pipe grade with bedding materials. Cleanup, all disturbed areas of the worksite shall be graded and brought to their original elevation slopes and contours. The orig- the area shall be trimmed and dressed by hand if necessary to secure effective drainage and a finished surface that is consistent with the surrounding surface and satisfactory to the engineer. Tracer wire or tape to accompany non-metallic pipe. All PVC and asbestos cement pipe that is installed must have an approved metallic wire or tape attached to it to allow the pipe to be located with a small detection instrument. There's schedules of rates. It's a little chart. Schedule of rates and charges for additional engineering services referred to in section D of the agreement for engineering services. Personnel on one column survey, blank, four-man party, three-man party, they're blank, two-man party, two twenty-five. Rate per hour, construction inspection, resident engineer, two twenty-five an hour. Resident inspector, a hundred fifty an hour, engineering in general, I'm in the wrong business. Engineering in general supervisor, principal or officer or firm, three hundred dollars an hour. Project engineer, two hundred and twenty-five an hour, cat operator and drafting, a hundred and fifty an hour. Field or office assistant, ninety-five dollars an hour. Land surveyor, two hundred twenty-five dollars an hour. With ANRC approval, additional engineering costs by overrun in construction time may be compensated similar to the schedules outlined in the above schedule of rates and charges for additional engineering services. This should be considered as establishing the amount of liquidated damages in the contract. Last page. It's a letter to me from ESI. Dear Mayor Yeager enclosed, please find a certified copy. It was a bid tabulation of the bids. For the ARPA rescue plan, Leslie Water System Rehabilitation Phase Two project, there were total of six bids submitted with lower, low bidder, base bid being Steep Creek LLC with a base bid of two thousand, two million, five hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars and four cents. The American Rescue Plan has provided funds totaling three million, six hundred seventy-six thousand and seventy-three dollars in grant funding for this project to cover construction, contingency, engineering, administrative, legal reports, acquisition, et cetera. Below, find a breakdown of project cost estimate when selecting low bidder, Steep Creek LLC. Construction base is two point five mil, contingency, we'll talk about this in a minute, but six hundred seventy-six thousand dollars and six, six hundred twelve. Engineering design, we covered that, it's two hundred thirty thousand, two hundred sixty-eight. Construction observation, which is your inspector that they talked about, a hundred sixteen thousand, seven fifteen. Easement docks, acquisition and administrative, eighty thousand. Legal, bond counsel, twenty-five thousand and interest during construction, ten thousand. Total project cost, three point six, seven six zero seven three. It is important that we enter the project with a higher than normal contingency to allow for proper, proper completion of the project. The phase one project funded by ADC is nearing completion, which we've discussed earlier. And the number of unknown water service mains, unknown water mains and unknown buried valves encountered were higher than normal. The original water system in Leslie was constructed in nineteen fifties or earlier and very little documentation exists showing the original system. In addition to the unknowns, we, we also know of other water mains in desperate need of replacement. Based on the bids received for the project, it is our recommendation that a notice of award is executed and the construction contract be awarded to the low bidder, Steep Creek. We've already gone through this, we've already awarded. Two point five million dollars. Please provide written confirmation in the form of a letter on the city's letterhead, a formal acceptance of our recommendation to the work hunt. Construction contract to Steep Creek LLC. It should be noted that these bids are good for a period of sixty days. This construction contract must be awarded no later than February second, twenty twenty-five. However, I would encourage the city to act promptly due to funding, construction deadlines. Please do not hesitate to contact our office herein. What are your questions? So, let me tell you my, my comments. That contingency that he talked about, it's in my notes to re-hit it, but I can address it here. I went down to Little Rock last Friday and I went to ANRC and I met with Chris Coclaser, which is I went down to Little Rock last Friday and I went to ANRC and I met with Chris Coclaser, which is the director of ANRC. Of the, uh, ANRC, so. I told him the need is great, we need to keep that six hundred thousand dollars. Otherwise, they could come back and claw it back. And I'm not giving, I don't willingly give money back, so. Tim and I discussed it and this letter went to ANRC with me. So hopefully I should have heard today, I didn't, what, what the outcome of that meeting was. Anyway, so he's talking to his, his finance, finance guys and see if we can keep the contingency money. That six hundred thousand dollars, we have more lines to do. Lots more water lines than Alex can identify quickly. Anyways, back to this agreement, any discussion?
When they were talking about change orders.
Yeah.
So change orders, the minute you get the first one, you're into the contingency. You're, you're into, you're, you're finding, it's discovery work, whatever you're finding, and it comes before the owner. Who is the owner that approves the content, the change orders?
So we, we don't approve change orders.
Okay.
What, it will go before ANRC.
Okay.
And also. So I've learned a lot through this last process, these change orders, it's, it started at the engineering firm. With from the, from the, here's how the birth of it, it goes, the contractor says, hey, I need to do something different. And it goes from them to the inspector on the ground, the inspector works for ESI. And then the inspector goes to ESI and says, hey, we need a change order. They draw it up, they, they see if there's money. And then from there it goes to the funding authority, so which is ANRC. Which is, see, it's, which is also ARPA, so.
So they're, they're, in, in, in regards to the, to the contract, ANRC is the owner for change orders. Is that right? Cause it said that it takes owner.
Yes.
Uh, signing off for change orders. And the reason I'm asking is because I've seen projects before go, uh, you know, again, because you're dealing with low bidders. That, um, change orders can really wreck a project because it can be built into their strategy or whatever you want to have it. And before you know it, you're having, in, in my world, we'd have to go back to the owners for more money because we're out of contingency, right? So that's why I was asking who actually owns that piece and who's tracking.
They're the money, they're the money folks.
Okay.
Um, this last one was AEDC. The CDBG grant went through AEDC, so Chelsea sent it to her boss down in Little Rock. So that's where they were the owner of that.
But we'll still be able to try that as well?
Absolutely.
In those notes or whatever.
We will see it. I get those. It has to come through the, through the mayor's office.
Yeah.
So.
Good deal.
Anyways. Any other questions? I will need a motion made to enter an agreement with ESI for their services. Got a motion made for the city of Leslie to enter an, enter an agreement with ESI. Do I have a second? Got a motion made and a second, any other discussion? Without any further discussion, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Okay, this is gonna go to ESI, okay. Next item on the agenda is our, is Mr. Davis's report card. For the last two years and mine and coincidentally, um, to life is from the year before that, so part of it. Anyway, so this is, um. The legislative audit that, um, they came in and, um. She came and took our documents for a period of time and she left and she came back and this was our report. There were no, we can read it. I'll just go and read the highlight, I mean, it's, I'm not gonna read numbers, but I'm gonna read the letter. Um, the enclosed report will be released, early released on December nineteenth, thank you all for coming. Early release on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and will be presented to Legislative Joint Auditing Committee for its review at a later date. If your presence at the meeting is requested, you will be notified in a separate letter. As a reminder, Arkansas Code annotated ten dash four dash four eighteen requires the city council to review this report. And accompany comments if applicable at the first regularly scheduled meeting following the receipt of this report. If received at least ten days prior to the meeting. If the report is received less than ten days prior to the regularly, next regularly scheduled meeting, the report may be reviewed at the following meeting. The city council is required to take appropriate action relating to each finding and recommendation in the report. And the minutes of the meeting shall document the review of the findings and recommendations and actions taken. Please refer to the meetings tab on our website, Arc Leg Audit. Or the meeting calendar on the General Assembly webpage at arclegaudit.state.r.us for any additional change to meeting dates. If you should have any questions or comments regarding this, please feel free to contact us. Next page is the table of contents. And here's the report. The financial and compliance report, city of Leslie, Arkansas officials and council members. Legislative Joint Auditing Committee, a priority, bless you. The priority of Arkansas Leg Audit is to assist local government officials by promoting sound financial management and accountability of government resources. Legislative Auditor reports on the fiscal affairs of local governments as well as compliance with relevant state laws and observance of good business practices. To provide accountability for tax dollars expended to support government operations. We have performed certain limited procedures with respect to cash basis financial information and compliance with certain state laws. And accepted accounting practices for the city of Leslie, Arkansas. As of and for the years ending in December, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two. And have issued our report thereon dated October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. These procedures were not performed for the water department. Management of the city is responsible for maintaining the financial records. And complying with the state laws and accepted accounting practices. The commentary contained in this section relates to the following officials who held office during twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two. Mayor Eric Geiger, twenty twenty-three, Thylitha Harden, twenty twenty-two, Recorder Treasurer Benny Davis. We evaluated the city's compliance with certain state laws concerning general accounting, budgeting, purchasing. And investing and depositing of public funds. During our evaluation, nothing came to our attention that would warrant disclosure in this report. This report is intended solely for the information and use of Legislative Joint Auditing Committee, local city government. State executive and oversight management and other parties as required by Arkansas Code and is not intended to be. And should not be used by anyone other than these specified parties. However, pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated ten dash four dash four seventeen. All reports presented to the Legislative Joint Auditing Committee are matters of public record and distribution is not limited. Signed Kevin White CPA Legislative Auditor. And the report of the financials, which I will bore you with with numbers. Alan, please let the, uh, the minutes show that the council has reviewed, um, Legislative Audit. I didn't see, is there any public comments? Anybody sign up for public comments? Brad?
I know some of you know me and some of you don't, so I introduce myself, I'm Brad Long, I'm your fire chief.
Hi Brad, welcome.
Nice to meet you, nice to meet you. What's it only been forty years now?
You've got the fire.
I do. Uh, this last year we had a one hundred and forty-seven calls. We put in, uh, eight hundred and seventy-four hours that I actually recorded. I'm sure there was a lot more than that. But we had, uh, ten air evacs, uh, four traffic controls. Ninety-three medical calls, sixteen vehicle accidents, thirteen fires. One actual wild, wildland rescue, uh, six lift assists and four miscellaneous calls.
Sounds like y'all been busy.
Well, the year before it was a hundred and sixty-four, so. We didn't break the record from last year, but we came close.
Good deal. I will. Council, y'all wanna take an opportunity, y'all wanna speak on any topic or you wanna let me go through or? I've got other stuff, so, okay. Um, I had, we spoke of this earlier, for those that weren't here, we've got a meeting on Thursday. Tim Mays and I, Chelsea Weaver, Grant Novak with Davis Construction. I have a, a nice little sternly worded letter, um, that we're trying to see. This actually puts, I don't wanna pull this letter out, it's, it actually says that we can charge them a thousand dollars a day. Okay, we, it's not money that we're gonna get in our, in our accounts, it's just, it's money that will go back in the project. I want them to finish and they are so close, they're on the cusp of it. This is a meeting that we're going to have though on Thursday with, with the owner or the, the worker at Davis Construction.
Is there, is there a punch list and everything's been taken care of?
The punch list is not done, um, that comes with the inspection.
Yeah, so it may be even longer.
They're on the, they're, they're on the verge of being done, okay? Like I said, this letter we, if, I. I don't want them to, if I say I'm gonna charge you a thousand dollars a day, they'll just, they could pop smoke, they could leave. You know, I know there's, there's insurance for that or bonds, so, but anyways. Spoke with Jared Wiley, he is a new director at R dot. He is, um, new Lori Tudor was the director. I spoke to him on our bridge, our new bridge that's supposed to come. Utility relocation should be complete midsummer. Which means that the, then they're gonna open up for bids and the bids will probably be August to September. For this new bridge coming through. Acquisition has not been completed, um, on some properties, it's not done yet. With that being said. That's all I know about the bridge. There is a, um, y'all got this letter, I hope. There's a public hearing on, uh, for the audience, I'll read it. Dear Mayor Yeager, the Arkansas Department of Transportation will conduct a public meeting to present and discuss the proposed improvements to Highway sixty-five in Denard. If you don't know, they're wanting to go from Denard to Bakkenburg, five, four or five lane. So there's a public hearing on that, um, January twenty-third from four thirty to six thirty at the Bakkenburg Four Square Church. Seventy fifty-four, Highway sixty-five, well, it's not Clinton, it's Bakkenburg, it says Clinton, but it's not. Um, you're invited and encouraged to attend this meeting and offer your views concerning the proposed project. Participants may attend at any time during the scheduled meeting, it's just a come and go like we did our public hearing here for our bridge. It's come in, um, and ask your questions or leave your comments. Yeah. And to view displays of what they're planning on doing.
So not knowing, uh, being new to all of this, I apologize if I'm talking too much, but. When they, when they do those, those lane, uh, expansions, especially between here and Clinton. The last time they did that. When they did the black topping of the road and went a long period of time with no striping or minimum striping. It was extremely dangerous because you, especially in fog conditions, you couldn't tell where the road started and stopped. I don't know if that's some, if that's something we bring up in that, then I'll go to that meeting because it was horrible last time they did that. It was very dangerous.
Yep. While I was in Little Rock, I made it a day, I made it a whole day down there. I visited with Arkansas Department of Health on some other issues that we've got, um, here. I went and visited with, uh, John Wilkerson at Arkansas Municipal League, um, for some advice that may be brought to council. In the very near future. Spoke, I went, like I said, I went to ANRC and met with Chris Coclaser, trying to keep the money. Water and sewer, in, in this letter that we just, or the, um, audit, you heard me say that it's incumbent upon, let's see. Management of the city is responsible for maintaining the financial records and complying with state laws. I'm sorry, that's not where I'm at. Basically, it says that, it says these procedures were not performed for the water department. So that doesn't mean that the water department's off the hook, we have to have a separate water and sewer audit. Um, which I've already done and I'm waiting, I spoke to Cameron with Cersei and Associates. It should be complete next week, um, I'm waiting on those results, they were, they were doing an internal audit, peer evaluation this week, so they're going to. So next week he thinks to have it done. Our sewer plant is in bad shape. I spoke to ANRC, I've called Tina Cole up at, um. Arkansas, at Nat, North Arkansas Economic Development. Spoke to Chris Harris with Arkansas Rural Water. We're gonna have to find some money. Our water, our sewer department is, our, okay. Let's go over some of the things that, the skirt that we had put on, okay? It is, it was improperly installed. Would you say that? And then, and I don't know which came first, the chicken or the egg, but the skirt was improperly installed, then the motor. So I don't know which one happened first, it was either the motor, sheer gears or the, the skirt, we don't know which one, I mean, we just, it's hard to tell. Reaching out to them, to that company, they absolutely don't know what they're doing. Do you wanna?
The ones that installed the skirt.
The ones that installed the skirt, they had no clue what they were doing. Is that fair statement?
That's a, that's a good, quick, nice way to say it.
A nice way to say it, they didn't have a clue. They installed it, I mean, but it was, it was, uh, it was, it's not good. We called them to come back to, to look at it and fix it. And they're, they were even more incompetent coming back. We'd have to get a, a new somebody to come look at it. I got a new name from Chris and he's, or from Scooter today, he sent you a, Callan, I think is his name. Anyway, so he sent you a, a, a text today about Cal, anyways, we have to get that skirt looked at. Our. Clarifier, our clarifier is, um, not doing its job. So. Speaking to Chris Harris today, he's a funder, he can fund it. He can fund our, some of our repairs. We need a lot of money for our sewer plant to get it in tip-top shape, but the immediate need, okay? The immediate need is looking like it's gonna be about, um, two hundred thousand dollars. So. With the lift station that we've got. That's, okay, we have a lift station down there that's, we're on borrowed time with a, two pumps in it, okay? Arkansas Rural Water had loaned us two pumps. And panels, they go in that lift station to pump up to the sewer plant. and panels, they go in that lift station to pump up to the sewer plant. If we keep those pumps for six months, we have to buy them. Okay, which, this is a cheaper alternative than what we were doing. We had a pump, a, a rented pump that, it was like four thousand dollars a month, okay? It was four thousand dollars a month with the pump and the hose running all the way up to the sewer plant. We're gonna have to have a conversation about, about money and where to get it.
Are the lone pumps working well?
The lone pumps, we just got a second pump the other day.
I'm getting by.
Yeah, I mean, but I guess the question comes from, is it, does it make sense to keep them six months because they're working and they're good or?
That's the only option we got right now.
There's nothing else?
That's the only. And they're about thirty-five hundred dollars apiece. So, um, that's not the only need that we have at that lift station, okay, it's not just, so we just put a new pump, we buy a thirty-five hundred. It's a little more detailed than that, it's getting the electronics out of it and holding it up to, and, and building a, a little enclosure to keep it out of the, out of the nasty, but anyways. The bigger picture is that we are busting numbers with the health department, A D Q. Okay, and then we do that too many times, they're gonna put us under, um, what do they call that, Alex? Administrative. Yeah, so I would love to go back to this company and just sue them, okay, for incompetence and get our money back for that skirt, I hope that we can salvage the skirt that we bought. We bought a twenty-five thousand dollar skirt. Okay? We just did this three months, three, four months ago? It wasn't long. Um, it's suing them would cost more, I promise you. I'm not saying that we don't sue them, I'm just saying that it, going that route will take time and money. And proving, more so, proving who caused what is the problem, would you say? That's gonna be the big kicker on, who messed up and where, that's just, was it a failure of that pump or that motor that turns that, that clarifier, we don't know. With that being said, I talked to Chris about options. Um, I'm going to, I tried to call, um, it's not gonna happen, but because our C D B G grant is already caught up, held up, you heard Chelsea say earlier today that once that C D B G grant is still open, we can't apply for more. Um, I can't, just, that's, you just can't do it. But there are other avenues to get money. Um, one of them is a, a loan, um, there's a thirty-year loan for, um, four point four four percent. There's a fifteen-year loan for three point nine five percent. But what does that look like, what does that mean to the consumer, okay? You all are new and you, you, you may have been following, but we have to do a rate increase by law. Our Act six oh five said that we had to do our rate increase, we didn't raise our sewer rates yet, okay? I spoke to Chris today and he had thought that, um, we could fund this issue, um, by ra, when we raise our water, our sewer rates, we're not touching the water rates, when we raise our sewer rates, it would be a five dollar, four ninety, four seventy-five, um, on a base rate. Okay? And then we have to go up already on our per thousand, that was, that's what the rate study found, concluded.
So the four seventy-five would be to, to finance this loan? Okay, in addition to the, the other increase that we need to take, just 'cause it's time to do it?
Not just time, I mean, that was what the rate study said, we were, we, they said we have to do our, raise our rates. This is a tough one, but I mean, we've got to do something. Um, we do have some, Mr. Davis, before he left, one of his parting gifts was throwing money into an R and R account. Okay, not his own money, it was the city's money. So we were fun, we funded our, 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 um, refurbishment and replacement account for the year, he did that. It's not much, I believe it's fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, something like that.
So, that's not gonna get, that's not gonna do much for anything. I, before I found the clarifier and all this skirt and all that, um, I talked to Chris and I said, look, if we have to buy those pumps, we have R and R money, you know? We could have done that, but this is a big, this is a big piece, this is big. So, I know we already have loans on that sewer plant. Two.
So here in, you know, um, here in the existing problems and the urgency of the, the skirt, the pumps being on loan or rent or whatever you call it all, those things that are the immediate fires of today, are they preventing us from, look, from somehow looking at the big picture? What do we want it to be like two years from now, what do we want it to be like five years from now? I'm, I'm asking because that's important too.
That is important, so to that point, I called Tim Mays, who's our engineer, and Alex and I sat right down here with him and we talked about all this. And we went to the sewer plant and I'm waiting on Tim Mays to come back with a, I said, look, I don't wanna keep doing this.
Right.
I don't wanna keep band-aiding this, okay, I want a, a full fix, okay? Two hundred thousand dollars is not gonna do it. Okay, just be honest with you, we're looking about a mil.
Yeah, okay.
Is that what he said? It's about a mil to do it. Okay, this is a really good band-aid, but it's not done, I mean, not by any means. I'm still waiting on the no, I'm still waiting on the plans, the initial drawings from Tim on what does that look like? I mean, so, it's not a complete picture, I mean, it's, you know what I'm saying? So the sewer plant is aging. Yeah. Just, that's where we're at. Hate to have that deep of a discussion, but that's the conversations to have, so, um, it's coming, we have to, um, I'm scheduling, um, I'm gonna talk to Chris some more, and if we have to have a special meeting, we, we can do that, so. Any que, any other questions? Um, new council members, you must get Act six oh five compliant, which means that you have to get trained. Excuse me, um, Arkansas Rural Water will be holding a class probably mid-May, it's an eight-hour class and it's on water and sewer and just, it's a mandatory by law, so. Don't know when or, I said mid-May, but I don't know where or, you know, exactly when. You gotta have this training within a year. That's, that's what the law states. I went ahead and, this year, I went ahead and refilled out, um, we're now another year down to Tree City. Arbor Day, I went and, went up to Mountain Home and picked up the tree, I submitted the application. We're waiting on final approval from, um, the Arbor Day Foundation, so it's in re, in review right now. Some of you came to this, to the meeting about, with Logan about strategic plan for the city of Leslie. It's coming, I still need some volunteers, I need people to volunteer to be on committees, um, and to kind of work, um, work with us to get, to move Leslie down, make it a better city, so. Please get with me if you're interested.
On that, uh, you mentioned doing a survey, uh,
I have the survey, I'm waiting on.
How do we disseminate in that, or?
To be honest with you, I'm ki, I kinda held back for the holidays. Um, I called Logan today, Logan, I forget his last name, anyways, I called him, um, to say, look, we're still involved, it doesn't have to, you don't have to live in the city, okay, to be a member of this. Just hashtag love Leslie, so. I've asked a couple other people that I feel that they do a lot of business here. Daryl Treat being one of them, um, he is very knowledgeable, um, and I feel like he could bring a lot to the table to be a committee member or even a chair, committee chair, so that's what's, um, yep, um, I'm going to open the community center for extreme cold weather, I've got a couple blankets to go down there, some cots, um, if there's somebody without heat. Okay, if you know of, let me know, okay? Website. How many of y'all heard of the Leslie website? Anybody? Okay. Leslie A R dot com, okay, go there, I have started, um, with the help of Ryan Mansinger. He's helped kind of be the, the web guy, um, volunteered. I, I, I'm starting to learn it myself, I sent out an alert today on it. You got it? Anybody else get it? Okay, about the power outage, um, it's up and running, I've got things, if you have something you wanted to add on it, let us know, um. It will be another spot where we can, um, put the next big thing, which is, um, we're going to February second, we're gonna start taking payments. Debit, debit, credit card, whatever, it's not the, you can come into City Hall and pay by check, by cash, however you still wanna do it. Or we, we're going online, so if you want to check your usage for the last two years, okay, you can get on there, sign up for that, you can go pay for this, um, there is a fee associated with, two dollars and fifty cents, I believe, so. That's February second.
So if you use the online?
That's if you use, yep. Or any of the, the payment methods, okay?
Except for cash and check.
Except for cash and check, that's free, free ninety-nine. Unless your check bounces, and that's thirty dollars more. Okay? I started going down this rabbit hole last year, maybe a year before, I don't remember, about a car charger for the city, having a city car ch, electric car charger out here. Um, there is a grant for it. It's a hundred percent paid for, for five years, we own the charger after that. There's a lot more to work through it, I don't wanna go saying that because the, part of the agreement in this is that the city of Leslie agrees to pay the electric on it, and I'm not doing that, so.
So this is for E car, E cars?
E cars, like Teslas or whatever.
So it?
You, we could, and we have to have a de, dedicated spot for it, okay? Right out, I, I think right outside here, we can, um, reconfigure this parking lot, whatever, but, um, part of the agreement that they sent, this is adopt a charger, I can send this home with you if you want and, and, and look at it. I don't, I, I, I kicked it back the last time because it had, um, the city of Leslie's gonna pay for the electric. Now it says.
The owner of the E car doesn't pay for that?
The city agrees to support the adopt a charger program with the following services, city will make agreed-upon parking spaces available for the purpose of electric be, okay?
Yeah.
You get more cars in town, you get more people, I, I agree with that. City decides to upgrade either electrical in the vicinity for lights or security cameras, they will pay their share of the utility upgrade costs. City agrees to designate the parking spaces for E V charging only. City shall be responsible for all electricity costs incurred by the E V C S during the term of this agreement. Electricity charges. The sit, number five, city re, re decides, and I told her, I said, look, I said, I'm not doing it, we're not paying for it. The city decides to recoup the cost of electricity, they will enter into a separate agreement with Tesla, the vehicle, electric vehicle service provider to monetize the charging, so it, it is possible that we can enter into an agreement to monetize it, so, um, anyways.
That seems backwards. That whole thing seems backwards to me, I mean, why would we pay for somebody else's charge on their car until we get into an agreement with Tesla or whoever? Is that what they're saying?
Yes. Anyways. I'm hosting a mi, a, a party for Mr. Davis, December, or January the nineteenth, December, Jan, January the nineteenth from three to five at O H A. I've contacted the governor's office, um, I've contacted Senator Kotman, Senator Bozeman, Missy Irvin, um, Stephen Walker, and they're all sending their farewells to him. City of Leslie is going to, City of Leslie, not the city of Leslie, it will come from the city of Leslie, but I'm buying in a nice award for him. And the merchants association, I believe, is going to do one as well. That's on the nineteenth, it's a secret, so, I don't know if it's really a secret, but I wanna, I told his wife. I told, I told, I don't think he's got faith, but I told his wife, um, because I wanted her to let their kids know.
Okay.
Um, and I think George might be coming in from Kentucky, so, um.
They're gonna be food?
There would be hi, there's Joy.
We need to bring anything or do anything?
You don't need to bring anything, um, Skylark is providing finger, finger foods, it's a, it's a, everything's taken care of, um, and I believe, uh, Ms. Rippey is providing, um, punch. So y'all have your, um, accident plans, you already got them back to Alan these? Okay, I need those back to get them in the mail. And your statement of financial interest, it's incumbent upon you to have it done by the thirty-first of this month. In fact, notarized, turned into Alan. It doesn't have to be. Arkansas Municipal League Winter Conference is next week, is that right?
Fifteenth through the seventeenth?
Fifteenth through the seventeenth, on the seven, on the sixteenth, at the luncheon, we are, the city of Leslie is receiving the Arkansas Volunteer Community of the Year. So it's a big deal. And, yeah. How many's going? Two, three, okay. There's another conference, um, later on in the year, so. There's been a, and, and to that, the volunteer community, I mean, that's not just somebody picking up trash, it's a culmination of a whole bunch of things. It's, it's a culmination of people packaging food, it's a culmination of trash pickup, flower planters, it's a, it's just Santa in the park. You know, it's the Nerf wars and it's just all kinds of things. The food pantry, it's just, so there'll be a big sign on the highway, says Arkansas Community of the, Volunteer Community of the Year, twenty twenty-four, so congrats. I received a letter. I don't know, if you wanna read it, Alan?
No, I can't.
I don't know.
I think it's this one.
That one first and then this one, I don't know, if you wanna read it, if not.
Uh, it says, Dear Mary Jaeger, in my best efforts to send a timely letter complimenting your fall car show, I find that I had an oops moment. While sharing stories with family members during Christmas, I pulled out my parade and car show book where I noted memories and pictures of events, and I guess what I found hidden between the Where I noted memories and pictures of events and I guessed what I found hidden between the pages. The enclosed envelope that should have been mailed to you a month and a half ago. Please accept my apologies for assuming I had performed completed staff work, mailed you the letter. I hope for the holidays are filled with the glow of a job well done for twenty twenty-four, yours truly, Jim Robbins. And this is the original letter that he sent. It says, Dear Mary Jaeger, I wish to express to you, your staff and the merchants of Leslie, my sincere gratitude for participating in your inaugural fall festival and car show. It was the day before that I heard about the event from a family friend that lives in Marshall and decided to load up and join in your festivities. The smiles that greeted me and all that were lined up just started the day off right. It was not evident that this was your first car show, as you had the music, entertainment, the food vendors, the community's sponsored raffles, the participation of many car enthusiasts. Buying for the right spot to display their vehicle signaled to me a well-oiled machine was in charge. It felt like I was in my hometown, as I saw several friends and familiar Jeeps to catch up on old times. Made plans for the future and even met some new friends. When the crowd gathered for the announcements of the raffle and the car show winners, it was infectious how the smiles, enthusiastic rustling of raffle tickets. Made each winning announcement made by you want to cheer for the winner. I was most pleased when you awarded B J Smith with your coveted Mayor's Choice Award for his military achievement. He has worked hard on restoring it to original, he was the, he was the one who told me about your event. However, I was surprised to hear you call out twenty-one for the Merchant Choice Award. And more than surprised to hear you call out twenty-one again for Best of Show and Award. Remember, I hesitated coming forward as I didn't believe you actually called my number. Please express my appreciation to your merchants that supported your event and provided the few coup, food coupons. The mahogany teak wood crafts, the gasoline gift cards, the huge trophies, I've located them in a place of honor in my man cave. Your duck necklace made a hit with my wife, thank you. Again, thank, thank you, City of Leslie, Arkansas, for creating a memory that will last a lifetime, see you next year, yours truly, Jim Robbins.
So all the volunteers that helped with that, thank you, that, what, this was my first. And ours, I believe, I'm not sure if anybody else had, anyways. I wanted to leave on that note, that's all I've got, council.
I do have. Ever, Fire Department Facebook page has right at six hundred followers now. And if you wanna follow, it's, uh, Leslie A R Volunteer Fire and Rescue on Facebook. And yesterday we had a representative from Survival Flight at our meeting. And if you don't have their, it's not insurance or whatever you wanna call it. It's seventy dollars a year, that includes everybody in your household, that's for ground and air. So it's, to me, it's well worth the money, because if you don't have it and they fly ya, you're gonna get a bill for fifty thousand bucks or somewhere right around there. That would have paid for a whole lot of years. So anyway, so.
Anybody else?
So about the community center, you need water or anything down there?
No, ma'am.
No help at all?
I don't think so at this time, I mean, I, I haven't heard of anybody when we.
He's even gonna be there.
Right. But if you know of somebody that needs a warming spot, let me know, and we will make accommodations.
And we do have some, uh, like mummy bags at the fire station also, if somebody needs something like that.
And I've got cots, and I've also got sleeping bags down there and those tooth throws that you donated, so. I appreciate you all coming out, um, I will need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Unless anybody's got anything else.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Got a motion made to adjourn, a motion made and seconded.
I'm making a motion we don't return till August.
When it warms up?
It'll be hot.
All those in favor? Thank you, and next meeting will be. Monday. It'll be Monday. Next meeting will be February the third. Hey Brad?
Thank you. I welcome your signature on this, we need to already fill it out, nobody can mess it up anymore, okay?
Having a listen?
Some serious reading you did there.
Yeah, that was a lot of reading.
I was just hoping there wouldn't be a quiz out there.
Um, so we need.
And you may need.